Meeting of the Springfield Planning Board to session. Alvin, would you please do roll call?
Martin Cunningham.
Here.
Luca Minio.
Here.
Rico Daniele.
Here.
Rosemary Morin. Rosemary Morin.
Here.
Gloria Di Filippo.
Here.
Leo Florian.
Here.
Jennifer McQuaid.
Here.
Chelsea Troy. Absent.
Okay, before we start our regular meeting, we do have minutes from June 17th. As have the board members had an opportunity to read the minutes? And if so, I'll accept a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Thank you. We have to do roll call, Phil?
Yeah, I would do roll call.
Okay, Alvin, if you do roll call for accepting of the minutes?
Yes, Martin Cunningham.
Yes.
Luca Minio.
Yes.
Rico Daniele.
What was that?
You got the minutes?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Okay, Rico's yes, Rosemary Morin.
Yes, he is.
Yes.
Gloria Di Filippo.
Yes.
Leo Florian.
Yes.
Jennifer McQuaid.
Yes.
Okay. Um. We will now. Go, all right, we're going to the items that we tabled last meeting. Alvin, if you would read the first petition?
Yes, first petition under public hearings continued. Beer and wine package store, location 78 Island Pond Road. Petitioner Raj Yogi, court doing business as Murphy's Pop Shop.
Okay. Does anyone have anything to add who what we heard last meeting?
Okay.
Phil?
It's Rosemary.
Okay.
Did you?
I was just gonna say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say there's somebody who is a Galaxy S10. Could they identify themselves, please?
Yes. Yes, my name's Sunil. Last name is Patel, P A T L.
Okay. You are one of the petitioners for this?
Yes.
Island Pond Road.
Okay.
All right, Rosemary.
I was only gonna ask, I know we had got, was sent some other stuff and I can't seem to find it. Can we receive some more information?
We received the addresses of the other. Place of businesses and we received pictures of the other place of businesses.
Okay, who sent those? So I can look them up. I know I'd seen them and I looked at them, but I'm trying to find them now. Phil, do you know who sent those?
I sent those.
Alvin sent those. Okay. Okay. I will say that I did go by the business. This week, I believe, this week or this weekend. And it looked as though the business had been cleaned up in the front. But I still have a lot of concerns about the parking in the front. There are no striped lines and so people just kind of pull in and and park haphazardly. Are there any intentions to of striping those lines and in the back? And that was the other thing you said, a parking plan. Excuse me, I just remembered that. But I do not remember if the lines in, if there were lines striped in the back. Can somebody? Give me some further information?
I did go by and I didn't see any lines in the back either.
Okay.
Hi, I'm sorry, I was having connection issues. My name is Attorney Kate Milligan. I represent. On the applicants for the liquor license at 78 Island Pond Road.
Go ahead.
I, just so that I, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, just so I'm, I'm up to date. Are you asking if there are striped lines in the, in the back of the parking lot?
Yes.
Yes, I think so we do.
We did the stripe line, but we can do it more better.
That's one of the owners. He just said that they, they did use striped lines, but they can certainly. Do better striped lines if that is an issue.
Yeah, how about the front?
Did the front too.
You did the front?
Gloria, I was, I was there this morning, I was there this afternoon and I did see lines striped in the front.
Yeah, we have front and a back both side line.
Okay, so you must have done them since I was there.
We done on the last week, I think, almost, you know, like.
And also we talked to the engineer to do the whole plan of the line, so that's where we're going to do it.
Say that again, please.
We talked to the engineer of the plan of the property, so he did the whole plan of the how to make the lines all. So we have the enough room on the front of the store of the parking. So, you know, like they say that we have make. Right, left to the right turn and everything and we have another street access to get out and to also from the back parking.
Okay.
For the warehouse street.
All right. And what about the concerns with the tenant that might have been advertising entertainment?
I talked to, I talked to him about the, they saying the live entertainment. He said he never did the live entertainment, but I heard about it. Next building, that's not nothing belong to us. Well, somebody's doing live entertainment. It's not like a belong to our building. So he have only the TV in the inside there, that's regular TV. You know, with the radio.
Okay. All right.
There's no music, you know, like entertainment.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Gloria, I have a question.
Go ahead, Leo.
I'm still concerned about who actually is gonna be in there selling the products. I've been in there probably 25 times. There's a very nice young woman in there. Is she the person who is gonna be responsible to check IDs and do? Everything that needs to be done to make sure that this is done, right?
Yeah, we trained the every employees go to the classes of the beer and wine because. We own like a couple other convenience, you know, beer, wine, convenience store and one liquor store. So what do we try to, we do the training to the every customers when, who? We sell the beer and wine licenses, you know, so how to. Protect to the customers and protect to the business and protect to the city and town.
Okay, you know, just again, concerned about the whole thing. I see her in there, she's by herself. I mean, you know, just the security from theft, the people, I mean. It just seems a lot for that one person to keep an eye on. Cause she's at the register ringing up Kino tickets. And someone else could be over where the beer and wine is and they can walk right out the door. The security.
On this point, because we can't afford, because it's only the larvae store, because it's nothing else in there. If we add to the beer and wine license, of course, we have another employees and something more.
And just also to clarify, they do have security cameras set up throughout the premises. They have a base operation counter. Where they can actually look at all the locations of the stores, the parking lots to see what's going on there.
And if something, if something did go on, is she responsible to what? Chase the person out the back?
I'm sorry, I can't.
I mean, like I said, if this one person is working, she's behind the counter with the plastic coming down. If she does see something on the camera or somebody is taking something. Is it her responsibility to go after this person?
We're not making her responsibility to go after any customer. Because we don't wanna be, have any employees get injured or, you know, like a threats or anything. So, you know, like, that's what the whole idea, because when we have two employ, when we had like more product and more. Beer and wine, of course, we have like a two to three employees. To afford to run the business.
So what is currently in the? Store right now? You sell lottery, you sell Kino?
Convenience to, convenience items all.
Also.
Soda, cheese and little groceries, you know.
Okay.
And tobacco product.
All right.
We're trying to add the business to the beer and wine, so we can, we can good for the. Good convenient for the neighbors and. Good convenient for the business and everyone, one stop shopping. We're trying.
Rosemary?
Yeah, I had a quick, I had two questions, actually. Just to tie into what Leo was saying, it's fine to say you got cameras. But one person running the shop can't watch the cameras and be helping customers. It's not realistic. But my, my question is, I'm looking at the parking plan right now. Is there an actual, and I can't tell by looking at the plan. Where is the entrance in the back? Is there an actual entrance that goes into your? Your place?
Yes.
Okay.
Who said yes?
I did. This is Leo.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's, there's a back door.
That goes into their place, not the neighbors, not the next shop?
It goes into their place.
Okay, because people aren't gonna park in the back unless it's easy entrance.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I can't judge it by this picture. I don't know what that little cutout is.
It was easy to access and out also in the back. Back door, very easy access in and out. And also the delivery in a back, back door, you know.
And will you put up signs directing traffic or directing parking to the back? Cause I mean, I've been in that store several times, never saw the parking behind it till I went last week to look. Went, oh, they do have space, but I didn't. Guess a lot of people don't.
Yeah, because we never had a sign in before, but we can do in the future. But because been so many years, everybody knows parking in a back. And people coming from the back parking and coming to the store inside.
Would you consider putting a, a sign on the front that says?
Yeah, we can, we can do that. Yeah, that's easy. We can do that. We can make big sign on that front door and that both.
Gloria, Gloria, could, would it be possible, I can't remember. When Counselor Allen last spoke on this, I can't remember. What was brought forward? I mean, I'm sure he talked with people in the district. And could he refresh our memory in terms of what, what their feelings were?
Sure. Counselor Allen?
Sure. Yeah, happy to, I'm happy to help out. So I intended, you know, I've talked to Frank Ryan. Who is Vice President of East Forest Park Civic Association and he wrote the letter. That was read a month ago at this meeting. Frank has updated that letter, but not resent it to the planning board. He has updated it. For the License Commission whenever that hearing is, is done. I know that Frank and at least one other person from the Civic Association. Visited the store the other day. Noticed it had been cleaned up a little bit. But I would say basically still had, I, I'm, this is from a phone call with Frank this morning. That, you know, basically still had the same concerns that, that they had a month ago. Which was the parking in the front, the parking in the back, the cleanliness. You know, the updating and I can't remember the fourth one. But those were the, I mean, I can bring up the letter that, that he's written. I don't have it on my. Right available to me now, but I could. But in general, they, I believe the stance of the Civic Association was still. Against it. But, you know. I can get the letter up here.
Could I ask a quick question?
Go ahead, Leo. Excuse me. Go ahead.
Has the proponent made any efforts to actually reach out to the Civic Association? I know that was a big issue. At the last meeting that there was no contact with the Civic Association, so I was hoping we could get an update on that.
Yeah, there, yeah, I mean, I. Let me just take a quick, quick crack at it, but I know that there was a meeting with Catherine Milligan, I believe, right?
Yes, yep, there and the owners were. We met with them on Thursday. It took a little while, I think, first doing hearing. It took us a while to get it scheduled.
Okay, and did you have the meeting?
We did. We met with them for about an hour. They, they asked them about how they wanna be, you know, an integral property community and address the concerns they had. I feel like we needed to discuss the safety.
Catherine, just one second, please. I don't mean to interrupt you. Someone. There's background noise from someone's phone that, that they might be, some, someone might be talking. Could you mute?
I think it's just a call.
I beg your pardon?
I just muted them.
Okay, Catherine, please go ahead.
We met with the, the commission on Thursday. We met for about an hour. We, we spoke a lot about security. I think that was one of their major concerns. And we talked about how the owners were very experienced in having a liquor license from their other stores. And how they'd address any security stores with proper training. They have the cameras in place. They're also, you know. Completely able to make any necessary signs or in parking lot issues as well. And a lot of their concerns seemed to be that, you know, perhaps there would be too many liquor stores. I didn't see that as an actual issue here. They're gonna be selling. Alcohol in addition to what they're already selling. And hopefully, this is just a one stop shop sort of thing. This is not a full blown liquor store. Where people will go to buy liquor. This is just a limited selection of beer and wine. Which may be different from any, anything that anyone else is selling right now. We don't know. But we feel that it shouldn't be held against them that to get a liquor license if someone else has one.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else have anything? To say?
Yeah, I would like to, just to say, you know, I am from East Forest Park. It was about two and a half feet high. But furthermore, specifically regarding the parking on Island Pond Road, I, I do think that that needs to be addressed. From the, you know, the, the viewpoint of the Department of Public Works, I do feel that the area in the front is unsafe. And. That the people who are going right now to Murphy's Pop Shop, they're going. Predominantly, they're going to play Kino, maybe buy newspapers, so. By adding beer and wine sales, it's gonna generate more trips specifically to that site. Which is a good thing, but it's also a bad thing in terms of traffic. Because now we're gonna have more people utilizing those dangerous parking spaces along Island Pond Road, so. Those, that's a really, really big concern for me.
So just so that, are there other ways that we can address the parking situation that might satisfy you? I know we can. You know, work on the signage as well as the lines, but is there something else you'd like? They were speaking with the engineer and. They were told that this had been, you know, it was, met all of the zoning and code requirements. And I, what specifically are you looking for? Perhaps we can, you know, take some additional time to try to address any concerns with the parking.
Well, I did mention putting a sign in the front that says no parking in the front, parking in the rear. So that the issue of parking on island off, just off of Island Pond Road. Goes away.
Yes, we can do that sign.
So you would agree to putting up a sign? That says no parking, parking in the rear?
Yeah, we can agree to park the, we have a rear part, big rear parking, so. Please, can you park in the backside and we can request personally customer when they comes every day. Also say, can you park for us? So it'd be a convenient for the neighbors and convenient for the everybody. For you to, easy to access out and not to bother any other client, you know.
The only issue may be with the other. With the restaurant next door. I don't know if their lease requires them to have front parking.
Gloria, I just, just to chime in here, I, I'm not sure how that's enforced. Unless there's barriers that are gonna stop people from pulling into the front of the building. I, I just, I, I don't know how that happens. And I, I don't think that's gonna be a, a, a city enforcing that, that there's no parking in the front of this building. I, I just don't know how that works.
And I would agree with, I would, I would agree with Phil on that. I think that, you know, once we were talking about changes to the site. You know, that site right now, it has been approved for its existing use, probably through the Department of Public Works a number of years ago. So when we're talking about making changes to the site, it really probably. Warren something to be submitted to the department to verify that. The plan that they are putting together is, is going to work in a safe manner.
Would it be, just throwing this out, because I don't know the rules on that, but would it be possible to only have a handicap? You know, wider handicapped of like two or three period handicap parking spaces that would definitely. People couldn't park there if they're handicapped. It could take up the space, cause you can make them like a, a size of a parking thing, one and a half times. And that way they're still parking, but it's left for handicapped. Is there a handicap access there?
Yes, we do have the handicap access from the back door and the back part.
From the back and the front or just the back?
We do have in a back one, but I'm not sure I did front or not, but I can make it on the front. Because it's easy to access in and out from the front too.
Okay, because I was just thinking that way, people were less likely to park there, you know, if it's handicapped. And you can make wider spaces, just throwing it out.
Sure, I got you. So we can do on the front like a handicapped parking on front, so that way get wider out. I can agree for that. We can do that.
Okay.
Thank, that would definitely cut down the number of cars parked there, you know?
Yep.
Gloria, you make a good point, very nice.
Phil, do you think that would work?
I, I guess, I, again, I, I, I don't know how many parking spaces are in the back, you know, there, I, you know, eliminating parking. I don't know if it makes. This, you know, the, you know, again, I, you'd have to calculate the size of the store and how many parking spaces are required under zoning. I don't.
We, we have parking in a back like 19 car we can park right now.
Oh.
All right, well, I was back here. I'm not sure you're.
That's good size.
That's. That's what your business is.
Yes.
Well, that's why, again, I don't know how many other businesses are being serviced by those parking in the back.
It's only one business, the next door also.
The restaurant.
Two, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
We have like. 10 parking on a front actually and 19 parking in a back, that's what we count. But if we reduce from the front, like say the wider we making for the handicap, we still have 19 parking in a back door. And like a four or five on front.
The, the thing is in the front, it's just that people pull in. And when you back up, you back right over the sidewalk. I mean, that's where the people walk. That's what makes it dangerous. And even if you put three handicap parking places, there's, there's more room. There's still more room available and I can't see people. If there's empty space. I know, I know they're gonna pull in.
Yeah.
Right next to the handicap. And like, Rosemary, like you said, maybe. You know, you could put like a little. Not a fence, a gate, just, you know, those wooden things to shorten up the parking lot if that's what you wanna do in the front.
When, when we spoke into the engineer, there was 160 feet. Space we have to back up.
I mean, are, are you looking for some sort of report on the safety of your front parking lot?
I think that, and this is just what my impression of everything that's been said and from the East Forest Park Civic Association. Aside from the fact that they're concerned about another liquor going in close to where there is a, another established business. It's the parking in the front. And so. It might behoove you to. Take. Some time to think about what could be done in the front. To alleviate those fears, because that, in my opinion, is the, the. The biggest issue because of safety of people walking there. And pulling out into traffic. And so you can look at, do you have in your lease, as you mentioned? Does the restaurant have to have so many spaces up front? Does it have to have so many spaces in the back? So you know exactly what you're getting into before you agree to anything. And you might have an opportunity to look at what you could do to. If it turns out you can prevent parking in the front, how can you prevent it other than, other than a sign? A cement barrier or planters or whatever?
We have, can we perhaps push this off? I, I don't know how long it's gonna take for them to look into. I know your next meeting should be in two weeks. But can we have some additional time to try to address your concerns?
I, that can be. Certainly, that can be done. Does anyone have any objections?
No.
No, I'd rather just get it resolved so they can move on and do it.
Okay. So Phil, can, do we have to take a vote to table this petition again?
Yeah, I mean, if, if that's the will of the, of the board, I would, I would take a, I would make a motion to continue the hearing.
Okay. So do I have a motion?
A motion to continue the hearing.
And I'll second it.
Thank you, Leo. Thank you, Rosemary. Alvin, would you do roll call, please, on the, on the motion to continue the hearing?
Okay, Martin Cunningham?
Yes.
Luca Minio?
Yes.
Rico Daniele?
Yes.
Rosemary Morin?
Yes.
Gloria Di Filippo?
Yes.
Leo Florian?
Yes.
Jennifer McQuaid?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. You might wanna touch base with the East Forest Park Civic Association again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Alvin, if you would read our next. Continued petition?
Yes, the second continued matter on the agenda, beer and wine liquor license new. Location 1500 Main Street, petitioner Hot Table, M A LLC, doing business as Hot Table.
Thank you. I have not received any. Letters of, of any kind or feedback, let me say.
Yeah, I've not received anything on this, on this.
Okay, all right. So does any of, do any of the board members have any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, then I will accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the following conditions. The hours of operation shall be as stated by the applicant. And number two, there should be no banners, streamers, tenants or promotional material located on the exterior of the property.
I second. Rosemary seconded. Alvin, roll call again, please.
Martin Cunningham?
Yes.
Luca Minio?
Yes.
Rico Daniele?
Yes.
Rosemary Morin?
Yes. Actually, I thought we'd already voted on it, so yes.
Gloria Di Filippo?
Yes.
Leo Florian?
Yes.
Jennifer McQuaid?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, can we do our next petition? Remen Avenue.
Third item under continued items, alteration, expansion of premise. Location 911, also known as 5 Remen Avenue. Petitioner City Line Capital Incorporated, doing business as City Line.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna let my attorney speak, but I'm gonna be here um to answer any questions, so.
Okay, thank you, Marty.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, Chairperson, and fellow members of the board. I'm Attorney Tom Rook, on behalf of the petitioner.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Let me state that um we have received some letters of, we have two letters. Yep, two letters from the neighbors and we also have received your patio security plan. So Phil, should I read the letters now or? What should we do?
Yeah, I would suggest to read the letters and 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 they may want to address, I I know they they also submitted a a letter as well. Um, so I would, I would probably start with the opposition's letter and then there, if you want to read the uh the letter that was submitted, kind of in response to that, and then we can go on from there.
Okay, all right. Uh, to whom it may concern, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to submit another letter. We are the neighbor directly next to the City Line and the neighbor that will be most affected by the proposed changes. We have reviewed the planning board meeting held on July fifteenth and still have many concerns and questions, as I'm sure you can expect. One of the most telling parts of the meeting for us was when Mr. Rook was asked if they would consider closing the patio at ten P M rather than eleven P M to accommodate the city noise ordinance already in place. He immediately responded without hesitation, no, we will not. We believe this shows you exactly what we have lived next, lived next door to for thirty-five years. It shows a complete disregard for the neighbors, a co- complete lack of compromise, and just total disrespect for us. For a neighborhood bar, it has never come across as neighborhood friendly. As you may have seen from the photos or from driving by, our home is directly next door, as close as you can get, no need to argue about the exact distance. There is not another exam- example locally of a bar being this close to a residence. Patty's is not located anywhere near homes and the homes surrounding Nathan Bills are substantially further away. This is a new situation for all of us and we appreciate you giving us a voice. Just to be clear, we completely oppose an outdoor patio at this bar. We believe the bar's business should remain inside the bar itself to keep the noise to a minimum for the sake of the neighborhood it's located in. The the most disturbing part of the meeting for us was when Mr. Rook declared that the patrons will be policing one another. Besides being a comical statement, it was the most unreasonable piece that was proposed by the City Line and continues to show their lack of planning and lack of care. Patrons of a bar certainly cannot police themselves and that further proves to us that there will be who knows how many loud intoxicated people drinking outside right next to our home at all hours of the night. Just business as usual for the City Line, because they have always operated in whatever way they see fit with no regard for the neighbors. For Mr. Rook to think that self policing was an adequate response to monitoring the pi- patio is very sad. Patrons have always been loud when outside smoking cigarettes, allowing adding in allowing them to drink outside as well as just a disaster waiting to happen and should not be allowed in the neighborhood. As to the lack of complaints, you can only complain so many times over thirty-five years and never see any action towards change before you just give up. Plus, this outdoor patio is completely different from normal business. This is a new situation for all of us and one that we don't see as being appropriate for a bar located this close to people's homes. We want answers, an actual plan for someone to think of the neighbors for once. Since they have had an entire month, I'm sure they have come up with something. Who will be making sure there are only a specific amount of people outside at a time? Who will force the intoxicated patient, patrons inside when the patio closes and make sure they stay inside? You, excuse me, you can throw a camera up and say that a bartender will walk out every uh walk out there every fifteen minutes, but who is monitoring that camera? And who is making sure policing is actually occurring? To us, it sounds like we will be free, excuse me, to us, it will sound like it will be a free for all, just feet from our homes. For the last thirty-five years, we have wanted to have prob- we have never wanted to have problems with this establishment. But as you can see, it is literally a bar located in neighborhood directly abutting homes. We've tolerated for years, but expanding to an outdoor patio was unreasonable in our eyes and we hope that you agree. Thank you again for your time. Les and Gail McCray, fifteen Remen Avenue, Springfield.
Yeah, Gloria, I think the second letter is 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 kind of the response to that from the, from the.
Yes. So do you want me to read this one also?
Yeah, unless 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 there's questions by the board on that specific letter, but.
Are there any questions before I start the next letter? Okay, this letter is from Martin Cunningham. I would like to respond to a recent letter by one of the neighbors concerning the City Line Cafe. I believe there is several inaccuracies and would like to clarify some issues. The letter states that we have complete disregard for the neighbors. This is false. I have a great deal of respect for the neighbors and the neighborhood. The City Line Cafe is the definition of a neighborhood place. It has been in business for approximately eighty years and the majority of the customers still live in the surrounding neighborhood. For seven years, I have invested my time, energy, and money into making the City Line a more respectable, friendly, and safe place. I take pride in the neighborhood. I own three houses less than one mile away from the City Line. So I have a vested interest in making the neighborhood a better place. To help the neighbors and alleviate parking issues on Remen Avenue, the landlord and I developed a plan to remove an existing house and construct a parking lot on Hamburg Street. This parking lot has dramatically reduced congestion on Remen Avenue, eliminated the need for on-street parking. This was a considerable expense that not only helped the businesses in the area, but also helped the residents along Remen Avenue. In order to enclose the patio, instead of installing a cheap fence, we installed a sixteen by eleven fully insulated shed that covers much of the eastern side of the patio. This shed also allows for deliveries to be done in the back of the building, therefore eliminating the need for very large trucks on Remen Ave. Again, this helps our business, but is also beneficial to our neighbors on Remen Ave. The second point of clarification, there is not another example locally of a bar being this close to a residence. Rumble Seat Bar and Grill is point four miles down Springfield Street, although it is in Chicopee, it is local. They have a patio two to three times the size of the City Line patio and they are surrounded by residential houses. Rory Fitzgerald's in East Springfield has, also has a patio near residential housing. If the competition in Chicopee can operate patios, why should my Springfield business be at disadvantage? The third point of clarification, never came across as neighborhood friendly. In two thousand and twelve, on the day of the meeting with the License Commission to transfer the license from Joseph Veccharelli to Martin Cunningham, Mr. and Mrs. McCray showed up and tried to stop the transfer. How's that for being friend- neighborhood friendly? Since then, there has been calls to the D P W for a fence that was too high, it wasn't. Calls to the Health Department because of a cookout and many other anonymous complaints. More recently, a complaint that there were people hanging around the back of the City Line one afternoon during the pandemic. It was actually workers installing new exterior doors in the restaurant. I have not had one code violation in seven years. Final point, loud intoxicated people drinking outside right right next to our home at all hours of the night. If this was happening, one would think that the neighbors would call the police and file a complaint. As the police logs show, there has not been no serious complaints for the last seven years. I think most people in the neighborhood would agree that we are good neighbors, but I am also trying to keep a business from going bankrupt. This patio is necessary, especially now in the age of COVID. Many pa- patrons do not want to go inside and that is probably not going to change for a while. Under the currently current regulations, the maximum capacity outdoors is eleven people. Most nights, it's five or six people. It's much older clientele and there has been no trouble and little noise, so it's not a problem for the bartender to control the area. All the bartenders are tip certified and experienced with dealing with customers and I am usually there every night. If we ever got to the point where there were problems on their patio, I would be the first one to close it. The City Line has been in business for approximately eighty years, the neighbors know. The neighbors knew they bought a, excuse me, a house next to a commercial property. Before the pandemic, I employed seven part-time employees and paid thousand in local taxes. If it fails, the building will be abandoned and boarded up, just like three businesses directly across the street, Martin J. Cunningham. Also, um, we have received today a patio security plan from the City Line, which I will read. Um, one, I or my staff will be responsible for continuously monitoring the patio area. There, there will be no live entertainment allowed. Patrons will be reminded to keep noise a minimum. Bartenders are trained to identify customers that appear to be intoxicated and take steps to stop serving in a non-confrontational way. The staff is also responsible for the safety of all customers. Bartenders will provide table service and require identification from guests. Fines will be posted to respect the neighbors. The number of patrons will not exceed the maximum capacity of the patio, currently eleven. Anyone violating noise regulations or acting inappropriately will be asked to leave the premises. Any patron asked to leave the premises, more than once will be permanently banned. Any issues that cannot be resolved by the staff, the police will be notified immediately. Counsel Rook, do you have anything that you would like to add?
I would just like to emphasize that, I'm sure, person and fellow members of the board, that at the last meeting, I submitted a petition signed by almost one hundred individuals, ninety-five percent of whom were from the neighborhood. Um, also, there was a letter from the Hungry Hill Civic Association. I'm endorsing the proposal. Uh, I would suggest that they strongly endorse it. Um, but I also provided you with documentation from the Springfield Police Department that shows that this neighbor has never once called the police department complaining of noise. I would only think that if there was a noise issue, that the immediate neighbor would contact the police department at least once over the course of seven years. Um, so I ask you to consider the letter that Martin wrote in response to that letter of criticism. And also, I would strongly urge you to adopt the recommendations by your Office of Planning and Economic Development, whom I would consider the experts in this field. Uh, they're recommending a closing time of no later than eleven o'clock. Uh, with no banners, et cetera, et cetera, and we have no objection to that whatsoever. Um, I think Martin is a very conscientious uh businessman who's loyal to the city of Springfield, loyal to the Hungry Hill neighborhood. And as he stated in his letter, he owns three, three personal properties, uh, less than one mile from the City Line. Um, the business has been there for eighty years. So anyone who was moving into that neighborhood, and specifically immediately adjacent to the neighborhood, knew what they were buying at the time they purchased it. Uh, with the lack of police reports complaining of excessive noise, I would suggest that uh Martin is doing a very good job managing the premises. I would strongly endorse and ask for your support for this project. Um, finally, I state that in the event there is noise complaints, um, the License Commission is the ultimate, not the site, the the ultimate arbiter of whether this is going to be approved or not. Um, I can guarantee you, knowing Chairman Signatory and the members of the License Commission, that they will impose conditions that ensure and assure that the neighborhood is protected. And as for violations, the License Commission has the authority to bring Martin before the License Commission and to rescind that outdoor permit. So I'm asking you to endorse it based upon your own experts' recommendations and let the License Commission do the policing. I think the security plan submitted adequately addresses the concerns. Uh, Martin's staff is all tip certified. Um, so I would strongly urge this board to adopt and vote in favor of this petition, please. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Does any of the board members have any questions?
Yeah, I have one quick question. Um, it's regarding, um, and this is probably a more directed towards Peter, I don't know if he can a- answer this, but is there any way we could possibly have it start with ten o'clock and if they don't have any issues, then they, we, you know, we extend it, you know, some sort of condition where it starts at ten and and we, you know, the License Commission monitors it and then, you know, if they don't have any issues and things are good, then we grant them the eleven, or is, has that ever been done before, or is that possible?
The earliest we can restrict a, restrict a liquor licenses to eleven P M unless the licensee is willing to accept an earlier closing time.
Okay, I understand.
Licensee would have to be willing to start at ten and move forward. We, we can't impose that.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, it's Rosemary. I I have a question. We're talking about right now, the maximum that can be out there is eleven. As things change and the rules change, what is the maximum, there were no restrictions?
Eleven.
Maximum people?
People. People. So if there were no COVID restrictions, what would be the maximum people they could have out there?
My understanding is it is eleven persons.
Okay, because everything kept saying right now, right now, right now, but I wasn't sure if that was based on the restrictions under COVID.
Tom, that can't be, town, after the COVID restrictions are lifted, opposing, that, you know, suppose that we all live that long. Is it really supposed to be eleven people? It has to be more than eleven people, no?
It's pretty small.
Twenty-five percent of the capacity now.
So Martin is saying twenty-five percent of the capacity now.
And that's forty-five, it's forty-five capacity.
That patio would hold forty-five people?
No, no, the the regulations now from the governor is the patio can can have a twenty-five percent of your indoor capacity.
But I'm talking about if all that goes away, when it all goes away. Uh, is there a capacity limit legally putting COVID aside?
I'm gonna say that the building um commissioner would have an answer for that. But for right now, it's eleven. And if we are successful with the License Commission, by the time the COVID restrictions are listed, lifted, um, if there's violations, the License Commission is gonna act.
Okay, so so let's, basically, they don't know. How, no COVID, how many people can be on that patio if there's no COVID?
Thank you, that's all I'm asking, yes.
I don't know that answer.
Okay, okay.
Phil, do you know?
I I don't, but I would assume it's higher than eleven, but I I I, you know, I would assume the capacity of the I mean, the building department is only gonna look at the capacity of the building. I'm not sure if there's a capacity of an outdoor patio, I I don't know.
All right, so now let me ask this question. Maybe we can go a another way to get an answer. How many tables would fit out on that patio?
Four.
Four tables.
I remember four, but is that based on COVID or based on space?
Space.
Okay, so maybe there's a good possibility that more than eleven out there would be maximum?
There is four seats per table, so that would be.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Okay.
I would, I would ask this board to approve the eleven o'clock. And by the time we appear before the commission, the License Commission, if there's violations, the license, the License Commission is gonna act very firmly um against our petition.
But that's not, I I I'm not, I'm not dealing with that, I'm just trying to get a picture of what it's gonna be like when it's full and there's no restriction, so it sounds like sixteen would be about it.
That sounds correct.
I I have to say, I was glad to see Martin give some thought to a security plan, because I gotta say, last, last meeting, when you said the customers were gonna police themselves, I, that didn't go well with me at all, you know? Um, so I'm glad that Martin gave it some thought and has come up with a plan for that.
Let me expand upon that. Um, as I stated earlier, this is a neighborhood bar. Um, the patrons who come into this bar are from the um, they know each other personally, they've known their families for a long time. The patrons don't have the responsibility to police it, but as being personal friends with Marty, they're not going to do anything to jeopardize Marty's license and his relationship with the city.
That may very well be true, but it's not what I want to make my decision on. You know, you can say that, but it's not what I would make a decision on. I want to see what the manager is planning on doing, and he did come up with a plan.
And that's why we submitted the security plan.
Right.
Just had a quick comment. I mean, I'm glad to hear, you know, the plan that you are looking ahead. And I understand both sides. I mean, you're talking residents that are very close and, quite honestly, they're afraid of what might happen. Whether there were calls in the past, well, this is a whole within ballgame now adding the patio. But they got to understand, you know, you're trying to work together, it's very close, he's been there for a number of years. And I'm sure Marty doesn't want to have problems himself. What I'd like to see, I mean, especially now, like you said, going through the last so many months with the COVID, I mean, if having the patio with four tables can help this guy stay in business, I think he deserves the chance to do that. But as far as is making the neighbors feel a little better because they're uncertain right now of what might happen, instead of maybe waiting until there's an incident where you're going to meet sort of in a conflict, how about if you say every six months or whatever, you know, we just talk, we get together, come over to the restaurants, we'll sit on the patio, tell us how things are going? You know, where there's that open communication, where they see Marty right there, where they can directly talk to him. If they have an issue, they could talk to him, and we know he's going to resolve it. You know, just to make them feel better about the whole thing.
I can guarantee that Marty would be willing to do that. Absolutely.
Thank you. Do any of the counselors have any other, board members, excuse me, have any other questions?
I'd just like to say, you know, Marty's a responsible person. We've known him for years. He's a good man. You know, business is so quiet all around the country. I would say, from what he just said, give him a chance. You know, if something goes wrong, if you got to get strep strikes, then shut that patio down. But give this business a chance to succeed instead of shutting down in a few months. This might help a little bit. They communicate, like Leo said, please communicate with the neighbors a little bit better. Bring them over someday, maybe some pizza or something on the house or something. But then what's happened to what I wear? We're not communicating.
Maybe some sandwiches from Man and Rico's.
For the best. Thank you.
I don't think you heard that, but that's okay. If there are no other questions or concerns, I will accept a motion from the board.
Can't read it.
Okay, I've got to hear. I'll make the motion. I move to approve the following conditions. The outside patio shall be closed no later than eleven P M. There shall be no banners, streamers, or pennants located on the exterior of the building or fencing. All impermanent signage shall be removed. And there shall be no outside music or entertainment.
I second. We have a motion that's been seconded. Alvin, if you would do roll call, please.
Aaron Cunningham, this is his petition, so therefore he is recusing. Luca Minio.
Yes.
Rico Daniele.
Yes.
Rosemary Moran.
Yes.
Gloria Di Filippo.
Yes.
Leo Florian.
Yes.
Jennifer McQuaid.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alvin, if you would, we have a new hearing now.
Yeah.
A zone change. If you would read the petition, please.
Yes, under new public hearings, zone change, three thousand two hundred sixteen, address Northside Boston Road, proposed change from business A and B to residence A, petitioner Graham's Construction Incorporated.
Mr. Graham, would you like to present your proposal to us, please?
Yes, this is Austin Graham. Good evening, everybody. I would like to get a zone change to continue my Elaine Circle development for residential homes.
Okay, we have the, does everybody have the plan in front of them? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. How much of a buffer, well, before we start, I should mention that we have had some letters from several of the neighbors. We have three letters. So should I read them first or let, ask our questions first?
Or if you want, I can bring the plan up on the screen, too, if you need it.
Okay, that might be helpful. Especially if the neighbors are watching. How much, do you know how much of a buffer there is between Ralph Street and the back of the property? Mr. Graham?
Ralph Street, I'm not sure exactly. I don't have it directly in front of, let me see. I know that each lot is about more approximately closer to two hundred feet deep. I know that much.
Okay. All right.
Deeper than the existing one we have now. They are very, very deep.
So this is Ralph Street here, just so, just to orient everybody. Elaine Circle Development off of Bay Street, that's relatively close to completing. And here is Boston Road down here. So Ralph Street is.
Leo.
So these are the neighbors that were, that have sent in letters about the issues with the wetlands and the buffer.
So do their yards butt right against the neighbors on Ralph Street? Is there no buffer? Or is it just their yard goes right to the neighbors?
That's what I'm trying to establish because there is wetlands there, Rosemary.
Right, that's why, you know, that's, judging by this, it looks like it goes right into.
Well, just so you, I mean, the property lines will go right up against the property lines of the Ralph Street. You know, the parcel, which kind of, here's an example of one, would go right up against the Ralph Street properties. This, the dotted line indicates, here's the wetlands. And then this next line, I believe, is either a fifty-foot or a hundred-foot buffer around the wetland. So this is the, this is the issue that Conservation is going to have to deal with about how much, how much, I don't believe any of this area here is going to be able to be disturbed because that's in the wetland itself. Now, again, I certainly need to defer to the Conservation Commission, which, which, again, just for the, for the audience, this is going to have to go through a full wetlands review by the Conservation Commission. In the letters submitted, they've indicated that there's a court order about some wetlands restoration. I just need to clarify, and Gloria will read those. It's not technically a court order, it's an order of conditions by the Conservation Commission. Because years ago, and just to refresh everybody, years ago, there was going to be a church built on this property.
Yes.
It was down toward this end of the land, and there were wetlands here. They filled those wetlands in, but as part of filling in those wetlands, they were required to duplicate or recreate those wetlands elsewhere on the property. I don't know if that's ever been done, and that's going to be one of the issues that the Conservation Commission is going to have to deal with. And also, you know, how much it's going to be able to be disturbed for these lots that come up against the, within the buffer of the wetland. So I do believe, at the end of the day, there is going to probably be vegetation along here because that's part of the wetlands, and I don't know if the wetlands over here was ever replicated or not, so.
Are you showing us something? I can't see anything. I can see the plan, and I have the plan, but I'm not sure.
Cross here, is I got?
See what?
Can you see the, let me see if I can get it. I don't know if I can get it.
Okay, now I see your arrow.
Yeah, so, so here's where the church was going to go, about over here.
Yeah, it's not showing up.
It's not, yeah. It's fading in, yeah.
My pointer or the, maybe I'm moving it too fast.
Pointer.
Your pointer.
Let me see if I can. Yeah.
At least I can see the circle. Like, it's not yellow, it's not highlighting it, but.
So, so, yeah, here's kind of where the church was going to go originally. This was years ago. They actually built the foundation, built three walls, and then nothing happened since. So the wetlands is here. You can see the dotted lines. This is actually the wetlands, and then this is.
And your buffer.
Fifty-foot or a hundred-foot buffer around it. So the order of conditions was placed on this property when the church was being built because there were wetlands here that were filled in as part of that development. They were then ordered by the Conservation Commission to replicate that, those wetlands elsewhere on the property. And again, that's, I don't know if that's ever been done. But again, in addition to the zone change and in addition to the full subdivision plan that will need to come before the planning board if this is approved, it is going to require a full Conservation Commission hearing to go over those issues with, related to wetlands and the order of conditions that's on the property now.
Okay, so based on the dotted line, the wetlands, and then the buffer, it's knocking, it looks like seven lots out for building.
Well, not necessarily knocking them out. It just may mean that you, you know, they would need to get, it doesn't mean you can't do anything in this buffer. What it means is you would need to get approval from the Conservation Commission in order to do that. I think it's, if this is the hundred feet, you can't do anything within fifty feet, but you, you then need permission to go within the hundred-foot buffer. So it's not to say you couldn't build here, but it wouldn't, it would require a Conservation Commission approval.
So would it not also have to go through Mass D E P prior to going before the Conservation Commission? Because they would have to submit, what, a notice of intent?
Well, yeah, but I believe that goes to the Conservation Commission. I don't know if it goes to D E P, but again, I'd have to defer to the Conservation Commission on that, on that particular item, but. So I can't answer that question. I just know that, that the Conservation Commission is aware of this. They have not held their hearing yet, but they certainly will need to hold one as part of this overall development.
Gloria, while we have this up on the screen, could we hear what the concerns are of the residents that you said you had?
Sure. Let me, let me read them. This one is from Maura Plummer. To whom it may concern, my name is Maura Plummer at fifty-nine Ralph Street. My property is connected under review and has the benefits of wooded area that is alive with wildlife. It provides a noise barrier that comes from the Shell gas station that sits on the corner of Bay Street and Berkshire Street. I believe it is a court order on the restoration of the wetlands area that is directly behind me and the existing homes on Ralph Street to not be built on the back part in the wooded area. I do agree with my neighbors, which all our homeowners see the benefit of this natural wooded area. Many animals and other wildlife lives there and would ultimately be destroyed if some form of construction takes place, in which case I disagree with. We are all the families of Ralph Street and some longtime residents value our property. The next letter comes from Alice Delude at forty-five Ralph Street. My residence is connected to the property under review and has the benefit of a wooded area that is alive with wildlife on it. Right now, there are ducks, deer, hawks, owls, raccoons, and more. It is a natural noise barrier to the new Bay Street housing and the very noisy active gas station on the corner of Bay and Berkshire. It cools my yard with trees and shrubs and natural shade. Our neighborhood has no other open land. Previously, there was supposed to be a church with a natural barrier between the existing properties and the church. There is an existing court order on the restoration of the wetland area that is directly behind the existing homes on Ralph Street. This was the reason why the back part and the woodland area were to be enhanced and kept as natural area. I do not feel we need more homes in the area. We are already saturated with housing complex on Bay Street, another large complex at Bay and Berkshire, Springfield Housing Duplexes on Manila Avenue, small apartment building on Boston Road, and multiple single-room housing on Boston Road, along with multiple two-family units in the neighborhood. We need open land that can be accessed by the neighborhood as a gathering place and a place of enjoyment. We do not have any open land or parks to access for passive and semi-active activities. We are in the middle of a very active cut-through from Berkshire Ave to Boston Road. Cars have used the neighborhood as a speedway to cut through. The roads there have become very dangerous. Population continues and area is being overcrowded. We cannot keep building on open fields and wetlands. The area would be better used as an open wetland. The deer moved in when they developed Arnold Ave, and they were displaced to here. The animals in the area are running out of space to go. The schools in the area are becoming heavily populated, too. I have many questions as to what kind of barrier you plan on leaving for the now-existing wetland. What will it look like? Will the backsides of the houses be fenced in or have natural hedge barriers planted so that access behind the Ralph Street homes are limited? Please take into consideration a more passive use for the land or mixed use of the land. Preserve the open land that our neighborhood sorely needs. Alice Delude. And this one is, in regards to the proposed change from business A and B to residence A, I'm currently opposed based on the effects Nova Burden neighborhood. My name is Donna Rose, fifty-five Ralph Street, Springfield, Mass. My residence is connected to the property under review and has the benefit of a wooden area that is alive with wildlife, deer, ducks, hawks, owls, raccoons, and much more. It provides somewhat of a noise barrier to the new Bay Street housing and the very active noisy gas station on the corner of Bay and Berkshire. It also cools my yard by providing shade and oxygen. Our neighborhood off of Boston Road has no other open land. This property could possibly be better utilized as a place for the community to come together. We are landlocked by Boston Road, Bay Street, and Berkshire Ave and its many, many cars that fly through this area. Previously, a church was used, was to be built on the property, and there was to be a natural hedge barrier placed to provide a barrier to the city-owned wetland property that is also part of Ralph Street. The back part of the property was to be a park-like setting, and the existing woodland was to remain and be enhanced to keep the privacy and barrier between the development and existing homes. This is, was an existing court order on the restoration of the wetland area that is directly behind the existing homes on Ralph Street. This was the reason why the back part and the woodland area were to be enhanced and kept as a natural area. I very much admire the homes that Graham Construction is creating. However, I do not admire the lot size in relation to the size of the homes. We do not need more residential homes in our neighborhood. We have a large complex on Bay and other large complex, Bay and Berkshire, Hungry, excuse me, Springfield Housing Duplexes on Manila Avenue, a smaller apartment building on Boston Road, and the multiple single-room housing on Boston Road, along with multiple two-family units in the neighborhoods. Our neighborhoods are already thickly settled, and our elementary schools are overloaded, as well as the middle school assigned to the neighborhood. We need open land that cannot, that can be accessed by the neighborhood as a gathering place and a place of enjoyment. We do not have open and/or park land to access for passive and semi-active activities. We are in the middle of a very active cut-through to get to the suburbs and downtown. Our neighborhood does not have an actual home for our neighborhood council or an elderly center, and our library services are almost nonexistent, unlike other neighborhoods. Might this be a place that the city could develop an open area for the existing residents to enjoy or leave it alone? The benefits of open land to city residents is both mental and physical health or encourage a passive occupant to take up residence on the plot that shares Boston Road while the backside and the wooded area remains open land, possibly ownership transferring to the city for future open land development. It could be used as a community garden area again, a health benefit to the neighborhood. We cannot keep building in an. We cannot keep building in an already thickly settled neighborhoods. We need to encourage and provide the city residents open recreation land within each segment of a neighborhood, especially when it is locked by three major city streets. Even if the land does, doesn't get developed, it is open and can provide a much-needed health benefit to the neighborhood. It is relaxing and amazing to see the wildlife that can live in a small plot of land in the middle of the city. The deer came when the development took place off Arnold Ave and were displaced from that area. If this change goes through, what happens with the court current, excuse me, what happens with the court-ordered restoration? What will the development look like from the standpoint of the existing Ralph Street residents? Will we see the new homes, or will they come right up to our backyards? Will the wooded area directly behind all the Ralph Street homes remain? What will happen to and how will the wetlands adjacent to the Boston Road development and connected to Ralph Street be protected? Will the backsides of the houses be fenced in or have natural hedge barriers planted so that access behind the Ralph Street homes was limited? What will the barrier between the new homes and existing homes look like, i.e. fenced in or natural barriers? Finally, I'd like to say again that we have, as a neighborhood, an abundant number of single-family homes and multifamily homes. We lack open land that could be developed in a community gathering place for health and welfare benefit of the city and the neighborhood. We are a food desert, an employment desert, banking desert, and a recreational desert in our neighborhood. What we don't lack for homes, pizza shops, Chinese restaurants, or car dealerships, barber shops, and convenience stores. We need something unique and a benefit and draw to the neighborhood on that property. We don't need more residential housing. For my family and many families on Ralph Street, we value our privacy, the wooded area, and our homes. We purchased in the city thirty years ago in this neighborhood because it was family-oriented and it had the country look and the city convenience. We have had a va- a visit from the mayor to celebrate an elder's ninety-ninth birthday, and he was amazed at the yard and the privacy created by the country setting of the woods. We have friends come from Belcher Town or other surrounding communities, and they can't believe that we have the wooded area that creates the atmosphere that we are in the country. Please take into consideration the amount of homes that this neighborhood has and seek a more passive use for the land or mixed use of the land. Preserve the open land that our neighborhood sorely needs. Thank you, Donna Rose.
I, I guess my question is, up until now, was there any communication between the developer and the residents? Like, when, all the questions that they have, a lot of them need to be answered by him. And I don't, I don't know, was there any kind of meeting, you know, with a project of this size with the residents in that neighborhood to say, here's what we're looking to do, and find out what their concerns were?
Mr. Graham, can you answer that for us, please?
No, we didn't have a meeting as yet because I was going through the process of buying the plan and getting this together. Um, first thing, on that, on that Ralph Street area, at least minimum fifty feet of buffer is gonna continue with trees throughout the entire place there. The only reason why the original portion up front that I did original off of Bay Street haven't, didn't have a bunch of trees because it was a parking lot. If you all remember, it was an open, um, neutral forward building, that's why you had no trees there. Okay? Where I'm living in the woods here, now I love trees, that's just the reality. So, for me, it makes no sense, I'm having a conversation today with someone. Where the wetlands is and all that whole entire area, at least nine, to me, I would say ninety percent of that whole entire would stay wooded. Why move the trees? Why take them down? I don't need to. You don't need more than fifty feet in back of a house so people can be comfortable. The, the, the property is at least close to two-hundred feet deep. You understand?
Okay.
And it makes, it makes no sense anyhow, and from, even for me practically, to, to cut trees away. You cannot cut by the wetlands, one thing. Secondly, is no need to take down those trees there. I, I don't see the, 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 the point in doing that. Makes no sense to me.
How many homes are you planning to build on this property?
Right now, it's saying twenty-three.
Twenty-three?
Correct. And we're talking about noise earlier. I don't know if the neighbors been over there, you can, they can drive by there now on, on E Lane Circle, the original one. Six o'clock in the evening, very quiet, there's no, or morning time is very quiet. I don't know what noise they're talking about. The gas station is like way on the corner, and there's not a lot of noise. I have houses right at the side of the gas station. You cannot even hear a sound from inside the homes. Because all the homes are built very insulated and, and so with sound, and, and they're all fenced in. Every one of the property over there is fenced in, every single one. I could fence through it, all the property. Separating the gas station, separating the car lot in the back, I spent the money and did that for the privacy of everybody. You know? So the whole place is well-fenced in, and you can drive by there. I'm surprised the neighbors are saying that. But the noise, I don't know what noise they're talking about, because I, I'm there every day, I'm there on evening, and I can tell the difference. There's very quiet. Everybody who's moved in there loves it because they're surprised that the whole, the, the neighborhood is so quiet and well-groomed. I mean, I don't know what to tell them. But I know for a fact on that Ralph Street area there, there would, the trees are not gonna be taken down in the back there. I'm leaving all the trees there. They're gonna stay there, just a, just a portion for the house and a little backyard, that's about it. I don't need to take those trees down. I don't want to either. Makes no sense.
A question, Alston. Hi, Alston. You're saying that the last fifty feet of each lot, you would not be taking down the trees?
Makes no sense to take it down.
Okay, but that's not stopping people who live in there from taking them down. Correct? I mean, once I buy it, that's their option. Um, I, I was looking at the map, and it looks like there's one, two, three, four, five, six houses that are gonna be strongly affected by this. Um, you also have a lot, you said that the wetlands would be left the way they are, but you have a lot of lots that are cut into the wetland, so it sounds like those will be developed, or you're gonna apply to have them developed. Is that correct?
Yes, and, but because of the wetlands there, there are trees there, too. You cannot cut those trees either. So you still have a buffer there with the trees also.
I, I think that you really need to sit down and clarify all this with the people who live there. You know, I mean, because this is coming right behind them, where they're used to having a lot of woods and a lot of, you know, quiet space. And, um, you're saying it's not noisy, but don't forget you're adding all these houses and that many cars and taking away the buffer that's there. And that's what their concern is. You know, right now it's quiet, but what's it gonna be once there's that many more houses, that much more traffic, that fewer trees? I mean, I ca- I personally think it's critical that you meet with them, and they have a more of a comfort level as to what you're doing. I mean, you do good work, that's not an issue whatsoever, you know?
And I would, I would agree with, uh, Rosemary a hundred percent. I do feel like that, uh, the residents and the people of that area deserve a, a chance to be aware of, you know, you know, and this is not a, a, a single lot zone change, uh, by any means. This is a, a quite significant one, so I, I do feel like that they deserve the opportunity to, uh, to know about it. Um, you know, and that's, you know, maybe meeting with, uh, the appropriate neighborhood council within that area.
So, knowing there's fifty feet of trees is wonderful. I mean, I'd wanna know that. They don't know what they're facing. They're scared.
Rosemary, I don't disagree, and I don't disagree with you, Luca, but I see this as a couple of steps that need to happen. First of all, let me just say, it's going from business A B to residence A. Phil, am I correct in saying that residence A is a least restrictive of the zone change? Meaning, business A or B more invasive a business could go in there?
No questions.
Okay.
A and business B. I mean, that, that's why I just wanted to clarify that not granting the zone change in no way, shape, or form guarantees that this parcel is going to remain vacant. I mean, being business A and business B, you can not only have main business A, um, it's, it's more of retail, but it can be due to the size of the lot, it can be a significant retail there. Um, again, you still have to deal with the wetland issues, but, but, uh, you know, you know, a, a, a pretty large commercial development could, could locate there if they chose to. Um, and also, business B allows a number of auto body shops, used car lots. So there, there's a number of higher-intense uses that can happen in, in, currently. It hasn't happened yet, but that's in no way to say that it would not happen in the future. Going to residence A is the most restrictive zone beside residence A one, which is only in sixteen acres. Residence A would only allow single-family development. Business B, business A, by the way, theoretically allows multifamily development. So, you know, uh, uh, un- under the current zoning, there would have to be, you know, this could be broken up into multifamily lots where the, where the ground floor is a commercial use and the upper stories are, are, are multifamily development, but you are allowed to build multifamily housing in residence B and residence A. Same was true on the, on the mu- mutual forward site, which had been rezoned to business B, and then to residence A. Rezoning it to residence A guarantees that only single-family houses could be developed.
Okay. Then, if the zone change goes through, that's still not a guarantee that Mr. Graham can build there because he has to go to conservation, and he has to have conservation look at it, and give him all of their recommendations and, um, that he has to follow.
In, in addition to the zone change, there is, there is gonna be required a conservation commission review, um, a- and as well as back to the planning board for a full subdivision approval. I mean, the subdivision approval is, is not something the planning board can deny, but the conservation, a, a big part of this project is gonna be the, the, the hurdles through the conservation commission.
And then, in the subdivision plan, when, if this all goes through, could we request, um, maybe additional buffer or something, or could we put recommendations on that subdivision plan?
Uh, I, I believe so. I mean, just to, just to point out, too, I just wanna declare, you know, make it clear that, that the lots along, along the, the, the Ralph, the, the Ralph Street side are significantly larger than, than the lots that are currently on a Lane Street. I mean, these are almost double the size, sometimes even more. I mean, just an example. I can zoom in here, for, you know. This is a sixteen thousand square foot lot, fifteen thousand, thirteen thousand. Residence A only requires seventy-five hundred square feet, so these are significantly large, whoop, hey, that won't work.
There it goes.
He messed it up.
So these, so the lots are significantly larger than, than the ones that were on, uh, were while they still meet these lots are gonna be a lot larger, but
Yeah, they're much deeper.
Yeah, so, so theoretically, you could still put a house here and still have a pretty significant buffer in the rear.
All right.
Yeah, I don't have an issue.
Excuse me?
I don't have an issue with the residence A. Um, I just think it's scary for the neighbors when they don't know what they're facing.
And as I indicated to, to Mr. Graham, that we, we, we did, you know, as we do with all zone changes, we do, unlike a subdivision plan where there's less leeway on whether it's approved or not. We do, we, you know, I, I have sent Mr. Graham the information for the Pine Point neighborhood to, you know, and may, you know, that may be the appropriate phrase to ha- to have these discussions with the neighbors.
Phil, I have, I, I do have one question. Um, with the zone change to residence A, and assuming that Alston moves forward and satisfies, uh, the subdivision uh, requirements and regulations, and also satisfies the conservation commission, it would seem that at that point, the project would move forward?
Yes.
Well, yeah, I mean, he would, he still needs to file the full subdivision plan for the board. Where obviously you at DPW would need to review it and approve it as well, sewer and water. But if, if the zone change is passed and the conservation commission approves the, the, the project, then I, I, I'm not sure why it would not move forward.
Right, thank you.
Okay, I just wanted it so that the neighbors understand that, one, the zone change is not a bad zone change. It actually protects the neighborhood.
Correct.
I agree.
Second, that this zone change that the planning board may or may not, knows how it's gonna go, um, but this isn't just the end. And now there is a conservation hearing, and that would be an open hearing so that you, the neighbors could be present to understand what conservation would want to happen to the land. And then, once that happens, Mr. Graham has to submit a subdivision plan, which comes back to the city count, uh, to the planning board. And then, we would have another hearing on it, and we would review the subdivision, and we could take a look at to make sure that it meets the planning board, um, and any concerns the neighbors have. So it's not just over and done with.
I may also, I could interject for a sec?
Please, go ahead.
There is, I haven't fully owned the property yet. I, it's under contract, and I'm going through the, there's these steps here right now, but I know for a fact there's somebody who wants to buy it if I get out of it, to put commercial there right now.
That's what I was trying to, and thank you for saying that, to emphasize with the change from business A B to residence A.
Go ahead.
Anybody else from the board have any other questions?
But thi- this is just a hearing, right? So, I mean, Alston does have time between now and in our next meeting to kind of vet any concerns with those, uh, uh, property butters?
Yes.
Absolutely. Plus, he still has to go through to, um, the conservation commission.
Mr. Graham, I had a question.
Sure.
You have here, uh, twenty-three homes. Uh, and there's seven there on this wetland abutting a little bit of Ralph Street. Is it possible this project of seven, twenty, twenty-three homes subtracts seven that has the, the wetlands and reduce it to sixteen homes? And maybe it'd be a little bit better for the, for the neighborhood, it'd be less noisy, and on the, seven less houses, that helps a little bit. And because of the wetlands, you could eliminate that problem, don't have homes there at all. Just have this project at, at the sixteen homes instead of twenty-three homes. Just, just an idea.
I, yeah, I have to wait and see what the engineers, how the engineer draw up the stuff and what could work engineering-wise. But, I mean, for the kind of money I'm spending to put a street in and all that, I have to be wise about that at the same time, too. It's a business. I mean, so...
I understand it's a business, but there's neighbors there to complain in the world.
I understand, I understand. I take everything into consideration. I do, I understand.
I'm gonna have these sixteen homes instead of twenty-three homes because of the wetlands, and I think it'll be better for everybody. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Leo. Excuse me, Rico.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no other questions or concerns from the board, I will accept a motion to continue the hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to continue the hearing.
I second. Thank you, Jennifer. Alvin, if you would, do roll call.
Lauren Cunningham.
Yes.
Luca Minio.
Yes.
Rico Daniele.
Yes.
Rosemary Moran.
Yes.
Gloria Di Filippo.
Yes.
Leo Florian.
Yes.
Jennifer McQuaid.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, non-subs.
Yeah, I just have a, you're all set, Alston, I think. We'll, we'll hear this again.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you, you too.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, Alston.
Bye-bye, Rosemary.
Say hi to Elaine.
She's right, she should just say hi to you.
Hi.
Be, be, be safe out there.
Thank you, you too. Stay healthy.
I thank you, you as well.
That's it, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Hold on, hold on.
Wait, wait.
Oh.
Yeah, I got, I got, I got a couple of, of
I don't think he's letting it sound that easy.
I'm just trying, oh, there we go, so. So there's just, there's just a couple zone, uh, A and R plans. Um, this is on Locust Street, this is, this is, uh, the housing development on Locust Street. These are two vacants, I don't know, again, if you can see this, but these are two vacant city, city parcels. So, they're just gonna be combined into this, into the, into the existing building that's here on, on Locust Street. I think it's, it's run by, uh, City View Commons, um, Hulseover owns these down, they're the ones that we got a few years ago.
Are they building on him, or what are they doing with?
No, I, I think they're just vacant, they were tax titled property that the city took. He's combining them, I, I'm not sure if he's gonna turn them into parking or just open space.
Almost two approvals.
No.
Second.
Uh, um, we have to do roll call, Phil?
I would just say all in favor.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Ocean passes?
This is a little farther down Locust Street, the same developer. Again, there was an additional two properties that were owned by the city. I think through the butters program, we're giving them to him as well, and he'll be incorporated into this larger parcel.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any abstentions? Okay.
Uh, this is on the corner of Granville and Logan. Uh, there's a, there's a small little uh, little parcel here. And again, they're just, they're combining it into one, so this is going from a two parcels into one larger one.
Move to approve.
Is it going with the, the house next door, or is it just that corner, or what is it?
This is a lot here, and there's a lot. This, there's a little, you can't really see the dotted line here, so.
Oh, okay.
These will be combined into this, into this parcel here.
Okay, yeah, I can't see the dotted line. Okay.
Yeah, it's right here.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Um, this is on Goodrich Street. Um, there are three twenty-five by a hundred parcels that they're just combining into one to make one buildable lot. And you can see these three here, one, two, three, they're just removing the lot lines to create a buildable lot here.
Okay.
I'll make a move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, lastly, on College Street, this is another city-owned property. Here's the, I think it's going to, this, this butter is, is getting it here. The lot line, this is the lot line that will be removed, creating one larger parcel.
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Um, and just one, one last quick item. I'm gonna try and, uh, I mean, just, I just wanna, I've been asked by, uh, uh, Tim Sheen, the chief development officer. I'm just gonna give you one second. I just wanted to, I just wanted to bring this, although I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to do it. The Liberty Street Plaza, which is the old Springfield Plaza up off of Liberty Street. It's kind of in some financial difficulties. They've, it was recently purchased. Um, I, I forget the name of the company that purchased it. They've been trying to do leasing, but I think due to a number of issues, most recently COVID, they've lost a lot of tenants, um, and, and there's, there's the, the, uh, I'm not sure if it's fear, but they, but the real possibility that this property will be turned over to the bank due to the fact that they're not gonna be able to, to, to make the payments because they've lost a number of tenants. Um, and currently, that particular property is, is mixed zone between business A and industrial A, a good chunk of that. It used to be in the old industrial park up there. I think it used to be at the municipal airport years and years ago.
It used to be the airport. I remember that.
Yeah, so, so Tim Sheen has requested, and, and the easiest way for me to do it is, is to file a petition with the planning board to rezone that property um, from, from mixed use, uh, business A and industrial A to all business A. That, that would, that would limit some of the more intense uses that industrial A allows. You recall, even the Eastfield Mall, because they're zone industrial A, they've been looking for some pretty you know, intense uses to go up there. One of them was gonna be a trucking storage company, another was gonna be a tractor-trailer driving school, so in order to kind of protect the integrity of the mall and, and keep it as more of a retail, I, I, I'm requesting that the board, uh, make a vote that I can move forward with a petition. Again, the petition is just to start the process. It would require a full public hearing. But as I've indicated in the ba- in the past, the planning board has the ability to rezone property to the city council and also the owners. Um, so if, if the board is okay with that, I would, I would start the petition um, to move forward to rezone that property off the business A. It wouldn't affect the mall, technically, unless they were looking to do more intense uses, but it, it does help protect the surrounding properties in the neighborhood.
So, what do you need, a motion, Phil?
Yeah.
Phil, do you know if the, the owner is in default?
I, I just, I don't know if they're in default now. I just know that they've, they've talked. Uh, they've, they've talked to kind of the, the chief development officer that they're, they're, they're not, you know, they, they tried to make a run at it, but they, they don't think they're gonna be continuing to do it, so it sounds like it may move back to the bank.
So, Phil, does that cover all the way from St. James to Liberty Street to?
Yeah, it, it incorporates a number.
Past the Stop and Shop. The Bowling Alley.
Wouldn't just be the plaza. It would be, it would incorporate all the way down to the, even, even the, uh, even that new Family Dollar and the new Dunkin' Donuts, that's zone industrial A. And the, where the R and B is now, and where the movie theaters used to be, the bounce house is now, that's all industrial A.
Springfield School Department's there, the professional development buildings.
Yeah, right in the back it is. I've been to meetings there, yep.
So a good chunk of that property is still zone industrial A from years ago. So this would just, this would just make it all business A.
Sounds reasonable to me.
Reasonable, yeah.
Okay, so I, I would just accept a motion and a vote.
I'll make the motion for the zone change to business A?
Yeah, just, just to, just to move forward with the petition.
Okay.
There's second.
Second.
Thank you. Alvin, if you would do roll call.
Yes, Martin Cunningham.
Yes.
Luca Minio.
Yes.
Rico Daniele.
Yes.
Rosemary Moran.
Yes.
Gloria Di Filippo.
Yes.
Leo Florian.
Yes.
Jennifer McQuade.
Yes. Some passes.
Okay, thank you. That's.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'm done with Zoom for the day.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.